Good evening. I call to order the July 11, 2023 regular board meeting of the Richland II Board of Trustees to order. May I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I move that we approve the agenda for the July 11, 2023 regular board meeting.
Do we have a second? All right. The motion was made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Nash, is the motion on the screen there correct?
That is correct.
All right. Board members vote. We'll have to hand vote those of you that aren't logged in. All in favor? All right. The vote is six yes, one abs or not present. I forgot to mention Mrs. Agostini is out of town. She had a family thing she had to take care of. The motion passes. Could I have a motion to move to executive session?
Chairman Trapp?
This is Washington.
I would like to make a motion that we convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing employment recommendations and certified releases and apparent appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Mrs. Porter? Okay. All right. The motion was made to convene an executive session by Mrs. Washington for the purpose of employment recommendations, certified releases, and apparent appeal. It was seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? All right. There are six yes and one not present. The motion carries. We will now convene an executive session. May I have a motion to end executive session?
Chairman Trapp?
Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I move that we end executive session at 6:05 and resume public session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Nash to end executive session and seconded by Ms. Porter. Do we have any discussion? Mrs. Nash, is the motion correct on the screen?
That is correct.
All right. The vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries. And I should mention that Mrs. Agostini is not with us tonight. She's away on family business. We wish her well. Item 4.1, our inspirational moment, Pledge of Allegiance. We will now move on to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. I will ask Mr. Tyler Gadston, a Richland II graduate, to come up and introduce tonight's guest.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Richland II family, and to our new superintendent, Dr. Moore, welcome. My name is Tyler Gadston, and I'm a rising junior at the College of Charleston, majoring in political science with the concentration of crime, law, and society. I am the secretary of the NPHC at the college, secretary of student ambassadors, a student-athlete academic coach, banner leader intern, and the president of the Bademoue chapter of Omega Psi Phi fraternity incorporated. But most importantly, I'm a 2021 graduate of Ridgeview High School. Tonight, we have community members joined with us and students here to celebrate the diversity and thought surrounding Independence Day. A week ago today, we celebrated the independence of America. This marks the 247th year that Independence Day has been celebrated in our country. Joining me tonight are some incredible members of our community, military service members, a Marine, first responders, police officers, educators, nurses, and a social worker. Tonight, they will introduce themselves and briefly tell us what Independence Day means to them.
I'm Deboz. My name is Abby Cobb. I am the lead social worker in Richland School District II, and I am gladly serving as a member of our learning support leadership staff. Our learning support leadership and learning support in our district is our school social workers, our school counselors, our nurses, our psychologists, and our family intervention staff. And freedom to me, serving as a school social worker in Richland School District II, is the ability to work with multiple disciplines. And we all come together to respect each other's perspectives, each other's point of view, and to ensure that we do everything we can to serve our students and families in Richland II. Thank you.
Prior to and since Independence Day, the Marine Corps has been in conflict, and we've been across the world and across the globe in every single conflict. I've had the opportunity to travel to 33 countries across the globe. With that being said, I've got to experience different cultures and different events throughout the world. Marines are the nation's 911 force, and that's what we're known for, from humanitarian aid missions all the way through armed conflict. We exist for three reasons: to make Marines, to win our nation's battles, and return individuals back to the public, and we better them as we do that. My name is Major Gray. I'm the commanding officer of recruiting station Columbia, South Carolina, and I have 11 substations as well as one college station across the two states. A lot of you have students in this room or individuals that you may know that maybe have not thought about military service, and I want to take this opportunity to let you know that the Marine Corps is not just the infantry. There's 300 jobs out there for them, everything from aviation to logistics to administrative to cybersecurity. We have reserve opportunities one weekend a month as well as two weekends out of the summer, and then those individuals are called upon to go into service for our nation if needed. And then also, we have college opportunities out there for NRTC scholarships for $180,000. I look forward to working with you in your districts and in your schools with all the students that are out there, and I look forward to working with you all to build the community relationships. Thank you.
I'm Deshaun Gilford, engineer for Jackson Fire Department, also Air Force veteran. To me, Independence Day means a fresh start to a new nation, a nation with independence and freedom. Eventually, that led to the signing of the Amac... Sorry. Amac's proclamation, which in turn led to freedom years down the road. The journey here was a long journey, and everything takes progress. But to me, Independence Day is a perfect fresh start and allows me to be who I am today.
Good evening. I am Tanya Rodriguez-Hodges, and I am representing three agencies today, if you will. I am a proud, serving educator with Richland School District II and our ESOL program, which is vital to our community. I am here also as Tanya Rodriguez-Hodges, the executive director of Latino Communications, which has partnered with Richland School District II for over a decade, and we do everything from financial literacy to our annual events that you all participate in. And I am here officially representing Richland Sheriff's Department and Deputy Ruiz, and Sheriff Lot has asked me just to say a few words for those three agencies. First, let me just say that independence allows you to define your own path and make decisions that align with your values, your goals, and your aspirations. We have the power to shape identity and define success on our own terms. As a proud Afro-Latina female, independence can mean breaking through societal stereotypes and challenging traditional gender roles and racial biases. It involves embracing and celebrating unique intersectional identity while refusing to conform to narrow expectations of limitations placed upon us by some in our society. It also involves embracing and celebrating all that we have to offer in this room today: our heritage, our cultural roots, and our strong traditions that bring us closer together than we are apart. It means recognizing the beauty and strength in our identity and promoting cultural diversity by embracing our unique backgrounds, inspiring others to do the same, and fostering inclusivity and a positive representation of the communities that the district represents.
Thank you to everyone for coming up to present with us, and thank you all for your bravery in our community and those who protect, educate, and nurture. This is what the independence that we all celebrate. Thank you all for listening and understanding the diversity of our country and what independence means to us. Now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all.
And thank you all for your service. We appreciate everything you do. We will now move to item 5.1. May I have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes, Mrs. McFadden?
I move to approve the consent agenda for July 11, 2023 regular board meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden to approve the consent agenda and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? See no discussion. Board members. Okay. Is that correct up there, Ms. McFadden? All right. The vote is five yes, one not present. The motion carries. Okay. Let me do it again. Six yes and one not present. I'm sorry. We will now move to public participation, and we have several individuals that have signed up. Let me read this before we call on the individuals. Before we begin, I will remind our speakers that each person is limited to three minutes and that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive or vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically will typically be referred to a staff member for response at a later time. Our first speaker this evening will be Ken Breivik.
Microphone, I got it. When you're the first, you need to pick up. So I've lived in the community for, gosh, 20-plus years. Both my boys went through Richland II, and so I'm a proud member to have two boys in the community. We're talking to you tonight about what's called Release Time Religious Instruction. It's a program that was started by an educator in Gary, Indiana, and has been going on for 100 years. And it's going on all over the nation, but it finds its roots here in South Carolina. So guess the only place we don't have it? Here in Richland County. So we want to encourage the board to take this up. I just got back, a matter of fact, from visiting our programs in Los Angeles, where we were recognized both by the city and the county. And I remember as I was getting the certificates, I was like, I really want this for our home community and the students in our district. There's really three things you just have to know to keep release time legal. It generally has to be off the school grounds. You have to have the consent of the parents, and it cannot use any governmental funds. So what the program offers you is something that improves academic scores, leads to healthier relationships for the students, and can't cost you anything by federal law. So if that's something that interests you, then release time is something we really should give parents the opportunity to have, as they have in other parts of the state and other parts of this country. So we're just really excited to present this, and it has been life-changing for the students. 21 years ago, my first day helping as the national director, I was in Oakland, California, talking about a study that the National Council on Crime and Delinquency had done, showing that kids that participate in release time perform better than their academic peers. So again, this is something that improves educational scores, and it makes a real-life difference in these students. In Spartanburg, we had an event for our program up there, and one of the kids that talked was actually now in college, and he wanted to come back to be a Spartanburg school teacher because of the impact the program had on him. So again, you're seeding the future Richland County residents, and it's a life-changing thing that's had a big impact on a lot of the students. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Breivik. Our next speaker will be Sandra Boney.
Turn it off, sorry. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Moore. My name is Sandy Boney, and I'm here to urge you to enact a policy provided for release time religious education in Richland II. Release time programs produce numerous positive results, some of which you heard from Mr. Breivik and some you will hear right after me. The primary reason I stand here to urge you to advocate passage is because parents and students of Richland II should have the same opportunity as parents and students across the state of South Carolina and, in fact, across the nation: the option to participate in a religious class which is held off campus, which is financed by absolutely zero taxpayer dollars, and is taught only to students whose parents have provided written consent. So here's the framework of how the program could work. The program would form as a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt nonprofit entity, which is interdenominational, and offers release time religious class during an elective or exploratory period during the school day. The program will carry the appropriate insurance coverage. It will run background checks on anyone who will have regular contact with students. It will be responsible for all operations and logistics. It will work with the schools to coordinate scheduling and will provide updates to the principal. The program would either bus the students or provide escorts to walk with them, depending upon the distance between the school and the off-campus classroom. We envision that during the first semester, we would create a pilot program in one or two middle schools, and those would have one or two classes meeting. For instance, you would have a middle school, they could have a sixth-grade class and a seventh-grade class. That class would meet once per week for one class period at an off-campus location. I have seen firsthand how seamlessly a release time class could be integrated into the classroom and the school day. I have seen the smiling faces and heard the joy-filled voices of students in Ori County and Clarendon County as they were participating in their release time programs. This school board has a choice to provide parents and students a constitutionally protected opportunity for religious instruction. These classes have been operating in other South Carolina schools since at least 1992. That is more than 30 years in our state. I respectfully urge you now to make this option available for the parents and students in Richland II. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boney. Our next speaker will be Betty Nail Presley.
I want to thank the school board members and, of course, our new superintendent, Dr. Moore, for allowing me to have this opportunity to stand before you. For the past year, my husband and I have been advocates for release time Bible education. We had heard about Ken Breivik's work with school ministries, and we were really impressed with the impact it was having all over the United States. But when we heard the moving testimonials of the students and the teachers who actually experienced this release time program, we saw then the real benefit of adding this to District II. To understand the impact of this curriculum, John, my husband, right over there, and I, along with Sandy Boney, we took off to go visit the programs in Greenville, Myrtle Beach, Manning, and Turberville. We attended the classes, rode the buses, engaged with the students and the teachers. They told us how grateful they were for release time. We asked them some hard questions, and the students said they were surprised how studying God's Word has helped them in their daily life and how it had given them hope in difficult situations. For example, one young man recounted, "Release time really helped me stay clear of gang activities." Another said, "I knew about the Bible, but I never really understood it until release time. It changed me, and it helped me to have better relationships with my family and with my friends." One student proudly admitted, "I have actually memorized the Ten Commandments, and, what's better, I know what they mean." From another student came this very important response: "Release time has helped me to be a happier person." But listen to this: "Because it has shown me a way to control my anger." One young man shared that his family had been so torn apart by divorce that he was left in a state of despair, not really knowing where to turn, but he says, "I found a safe place at Bible class where I could talk with a teacher who cared about me and prayed for me." And finally, I found this so interesting, and I wanted to share it with you. In California, Dr. Caroline McKee, an assistant principal in the LA school system, tells the story of her student, Joseph, who was so constantly misbehaving that he was sent to her office almost every day. Then three weeks went by, and she really hadn't seen him, and she figured he'd probably moved. But going through the halls, she ran into him, and she said, "So why have I not seen you lately?" And he said, "I don't get in trouble anymore," as he pulled out his Bible. "I go to release time Bible education." Dr. McKee said, "I could have done a little dance right there in the hallway." We look forward to working with you if you decide to approve release time Bible education for our district, because I think we also want our teachers to have a reason to do a little dancing in the hallway. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Presley. Thank everyone that spoke tonight. We appreciate it.
We have one more.
We don't have another person on the list. Did you sign up online?
Yes. Julie Kent.
I mean, is the board okay with her? A couple weeks ago, we had someone that signed up. Yes, if come up and introduce yourself.
Okay, sure, I will. Good evening. My name is Julie Kent, and my family lives in Richland II. Our three children attend school in Richland II, and I support the release time for the students and the families of this district. I want to read a letter to you from Marie Gibbons. She's a longtime educator who has firsthand experience with this program. I'll try to read it quickly. She says, "Thank you for your service, first of all, to the children and parents of the Richland II community. You are to be commended for giving your time and energy to ensure the children in Columbia have opportunities for success and a bright future. The purpose of this letter is to ask for your consideration to begin the release time Bible education program in Richland II. The possibilities for positive outcomes are endless. I have seen firsthand the transformation of this program. I retired in February of 2020 from Clarendon School District II, where I served for 38 and a half years as a teacher, principal, and district administrator. Our district began an RTBE program, Clarendon Christian Learning Center, in 1999. We began small with 30 high school students, and soon there was strong enough community, student, and parent support to expand. Within a few years, the program grew to include grades 2 through 12. Students in grades 2 through 8 were released from related arts programs in order to participate. High school students took advantage of the release time and were able to earn up to two credits toward their diploma. In Clarendon County, this program has made a powerful difference in the lives of children and a positive impact on the culture. As you are aware, the pandemic has significantly increased the need for social-emotional learning all across our state and nation. Social-emotional learning helps students develop self-control, self-awareness, and interpersonal skills. Personally, I believe RTBE provides the best opportunity for character education in social-emotional learning. It instills hope, responsibility, respect for self as well as others. Expectations for teachers and schools are high, as they are called upon to educate the whole child. Preparing students to succeed academically and behaviorally has become a challenge in today's society, and we are losing good educators. It truly does take a village to raise a child. Schools can no longer do it alone, and many children specifically do not have a church home. Many parents have that desire but not the means to take their children to church. A release time Bible education program here in Richland County can help to fill that void. It has the potential to positively impact the schools, the community, and the future for our students. This program helps prepare students to be responsible citizens, develop a sense of pride, and a strong work ethic. Thank you so much for listening."
And thank you. The board will now vote on items discussed in the executive session. Item 7.1. May I please have a motion regarding the employment recommendations and certified releases?
Chairman Trapp?
Yes, Ms. Washington?
I move that we approve the employment recommendation and certified releases.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Dr. Scott to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Washington, is that correct on the screen? See no discussion. The vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding the parent appeal?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. McFadden?
I make a motion that we grant the parent the appeal to be heard by the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Dr. Scott. Ms. McFadden, is the motion correct on the screen? All right. Board members vote. The vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries. There were no other items discussed in the executive session, so we'll move to item eight, unfinished business. Item 8.1, may I please have a motion regarding the proposed revisions to policy IK-E, promotion and retention of students?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs., Dr. Scott.
I would like to make a motion that we table this until we get more information and have it at the August 3 retreat. After doing much research, and I'm pretty sure my colleagues may have done the same, there are so many conflicting policies with many of the school districts here in South Carolina. And I think I mentioned, my main concern was giving the authority to the principals to make that final decision on promotion or retention. I truly believe that parents are their child's first teacher, and they should be involved. With some of my research, I had a chance to look at different policies from different school districts. Some had the same with principals making that decision. Others had it left to the determination of the parents. Others had committees, and I think we need to take a deeper dive into this, and I hope my colleagues did have an opportunity to do the research. There are 73 school districts in South Carolina, and over half of them do not support this policy. That doesn't mean that it's right or wrong. There are different things they have in place, so I'd love to spend this time on August 3 to have a deeper dive with the discussion. Thank you.
Motion has been made to postpone a discussion on this policy until the next, until the board retreat. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
A motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Dr. Scott, is that motion correct on the screen?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding the proposed revision to policy J.I.H.C., Use of Metal Detectors?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash?
I move that we approve the revisions of policy J.I.H.C., Use of Metal Detectors.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Mrs. Nash, is the motion correct on the screen?
That is correct.
Vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries. Let's see, item 9.0, new business. 9.1, the first agenda item in this section is proposed policy revision for policy E.B.C.B., Safety Plans and Drills. Dr. Moore?
I'd like to introduce Mr. Will Anderson, Chief of Operations.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Thank you, board members. Didn't musical chairs on me tonight except for Ms. McFadden. So it was in our board meeting, our meeting yesterday. Dr. Moore fooled me here. We had our assigned seats, and she mixed us up, which was great. So we're glad to have Dr. Moore here in our first meeting. Basically, the policy you see, I'm not sure if they'll put it on the screen, the South Carolina Department of Ed, there we go, did a analysis with a safety, their safety officer and ensuring that our safety policy is in compliance. Two findings, one, if you scroll down, whoever's controlling that, is we have to add where we'll put our assessments. In the past, we put our assessments in, we sent them an email. And the second, I think we've talked about this before, but the State Fire Marshal and the Office of School Facilities have been in, have not been connected. If you scroll back, stop right there. Thank you. Fire drills is adding monthly fire drills. There was some compli, some confusion in that, but now, so those are just the two changes. So happy to answer any questions you have based on those two changes. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Happy for reading next time.
The next agenda item in this section is a proposed policy revision for policy J.H., Student Absences and Excuses. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. I'd like to introduce Ms. Abby Cobb, our lead social worker.
Thank you. Good evening, Abby. House, District 2, Research and Research.
Thank you. I am coming to you tonight for the first reading, first recommendations for policy J.H., Student Absences and Excuses. Really, the recommendations that we are making at this time just provide additional clarity to the language in the policy. With the work that we've been doing with attendance over the last several years, we've just noticed that there were some needs to provide better clarity with this policy. So the changes that are made, there is no change to the policy. There's no changes to our procedures. It is just providing additional clarity. There is also a special focus on our emphasis of ensuring, particularly for our high school credit classes, that we are meeting that 120-hour seat time requirement. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes.
So with the, without having, I want to make sure I get this right. So without having a note from the practitioner before, with the note from the practitioner or whoever would excuse the absence, or basically, a note from anyone does not excuse the absence, and it still counts as an absence?
Yes. Actually, one of the reasons why in our language we talk about verified and unverified, because the language of excused and unexcused is confusing. And when you use the word excused, you think that it's perceived many times that that absence doesn't count, and that's not, in fact, true. So the documentation that we're seeking, whether that's medical note, parent note, is to verify why that student was out. And so whether it's a medical excuse, a parent note, it's still an absence, but we're documenting why that student is out from school.
Okay, so regardless, it counts as an absence towards them getting the credit towards the class?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Whether they have a note or not?
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to make sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have something. So with the 120 hours, if they do miss more than 10 days, there's seat time makeup?
There is. Yes, ma'am.
And how does that work?
So each individual school, the high schools, are working on particularly what we are using mostly as edgenuity. But the individuals, the administrative team, have the ability to work with an individual student and their family to figure out a plan for what works best to how to make up that seat time.
So that's normally what they do at the end of the year when they go to the multipurpose room, and they're serving certain amount of hours Saturday morning and trying to get all those hours?
Yes, it has to be outside of our normal school hours.
So are they actually getting education during that time, or is it just seat time?
It is. We are required, it is required that they are working on the subject that they missed, that those absences from. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item in this section is policy proposal for policy G.C.C.A.C/GDCE. That's all really in there, okay? Paid parental leave. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. I'd like to introduce Dr. Franklin Foster, our Executive Director of Human Resources.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Good evening, Mr. Trapp and fellow board members. Tonight, I have board policy G.C.C.A.C/GDCC, which is based on South Carolina Code 8-11-151 and 8-11-156 that were passed in the state legislation this year. This policy outlines the procedures that we must follow in accordance with the paid parental leave. Paid parental leave is defined as six weeks of paid leave for an eligible employee based on their base pay. Two weeks of paid leave, six weeks of paid leave for the parent and two weeks of paid leave for the co-parent. To qualify the, for the paid leave, it must be an adoption, a birth, a foster care placement that occurred after June 26 of this year. It is eligible for all employees, as well as part-time and full-time employees. Does not include our temporary employees that we may employ, but any employees that are classified as full-time employees. The procedures for calculating the leave are defined in the policy for each of the areas that we talked about as far as adoption, birth, and foster care. And then as far as the usage of the leave, it's defined for each of those areas as well. One thing that I would like to just draw your attention to, so you would have that reference, is on the page four, it's under the paid parental leave payments and other leave accruals, right there, Toni? Thank you. When an employee's entitlement to leave extends beyond the designated term of employment for their contractual year, the district is recommending that we allow the employee to continue that leave in the subsequent contractual year. So for example, if an employee was, had a baby in May, and they would only get like two to three weeks of paid leave, to allow them to carry over that paid leave into the next contractual year as well. Those are the highlights from the policy. You've had the opportunity to read it, and I'll take any questions that you have regarding the policy that's before you for consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Foster. Is there any, board members, are there any questions or discussion? Thank you. Looks like we're good.
Thank you as well.
The last agenda item in this section is a capital improvements update.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Mr. Will Anderson, our Chief of Operations.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, and good evening again, everyone. As you all know, we have, we typically do a capital improvements update in your consent agenda every month. We have not done a public presentation since January, and so we have come to you to give, not only for yourself, a more high-level overview of what's been going on, but for our public. In your board report, our board packet is much more detailed information with a summary of our projects and more detailed summary regarding some of our ongoing construction projects. But I did want to run through this for your benefit and for the public's as well, of an update of where we are on our capital and bond and capital improvement projects tonight. Does this work, Toni? Oh, it worked? Okay. Thanks. Sorry about that. So just a reminder, we, 2018, November 2018, thank you to the Richland, too, community and voters for over 60% of them who approved a $468 million bond project in Richland School District Two. It's the largest, one, largest single bond referendum in the state of South Carolina to this date. To this date, we have accomplished a lot. Our team, the team I work with is fantastic, and I'm blessed to work with them, and so they've done a lot of, lot of stuff in a really short amount of time. 25 lobby securities, a lot of renovations at these schools you see on the screen, a lot of new facilities. They're up, they're up and running and going well. Right now, we have 10, nine projects under construction, and you can see those projects there, and those are the anticipated dates of completion. I'm going to go through each one of these in a little bit more detail in a second, just to give you more detail about each of those projects in construction. You can see the projects we are currently in design. We started design in the spring, and these projects will be starting in spring, summer. This is one of our design meetings. We were having Rice Creek Elementary School here the last couple of weeks. So some of the projects ongoing, EL Wright Middle and CFK, this has been probably our most complicated project. It started when a lot of those projects you saw completed was, and it's just because it's a very complicated, difficult project. I was joking with the staff yesterday, I think we're on phase 75 of this project. I have no idea, but it is, it is a lot. But I thought it'd be good to show the rendering of what we're still trying to get to. So the big picture is where we're getting to, and we're hopeful to get there very soon. We are now, you can see in the background in the images, the top-left image, you can see that's EL Wright. It is operational. It's working, so that, it mirrors the rendering. And then we're working on Center for Knowledge right now. That's that building under construction in the bottom left. You can see that, that building closest to us. Once that gets done, we move in, and we do all the demolition to get those drives done and the football field done. So we've got a little ways to go, but it's because we're on a postage stamp for a middle school with 1,200, 1,200 to 1,300 students and a lot to do. So the community's been great supporting this, but we're making very good progress. Russell Northeast High School, another project that's in phases. As you all know, Russell Northeast High School is lots of different separate buildings. So we've done a lot of work with connecting the buildings. You can see the roof line. We've made some connections. We've done a lot of interior, interior work. We're now in the last phase, and that's upfitting the courtyard to a more usable courtyard and cafeteria expansion. You can see on the first picture on the left, that's a more shaded space. That courtyard never had any shade, so a more usable space and a big cafeteria expansion with the windows. You can see in the, kind of the aerial views of the all-new roof and HVAC equipment that's been on there. So that should be complete August. The only thing we're missing is the serving line, but we should get that in the middle of August so that everything's ready to go at R and E. Joseph Kiel's Seven Acre Site, so it's a 1950s-era school that really couldn't get, we could not, there's no land available to build a new school, so we're doing some major renovations. Very excited about this. We're updating, brand-new kitchen, brand-new theater space. Joseph Kiel's has a lot of arts, so we've got about 10,000-square-foot addition with theater, multipurpose, new kitchen, as well as some very good interior renovations along the school as well. We're tracking to finish that here before school starts. Conder, very similar but a little different. We started Conder later than Joseph Kiel, so it'll be done in October, November, but it's another addition. Theater space, Conder's for the arts, so we have a performance space for this school that's an arts-integrated magnet school, new gym, and then updating and adding a renovation to the cafeteria. Another 1950s-era school that sits on about eight acres, not enough land to rebuild, no land around, but we're really doing a nice up, facelift to this school as well, as well as updating the drives and parking. Performing Arts Center, which is right here in the back door. I know the people here at this building who work here are ready for the shaking to stop, and I can tell them that the shaking will stop very soon. So we are now starting to get in the dry. You can see some of the photos here, which are stunning. This is just going to be a phenomenal space. We're, I got some good news today in operations. A lot of times we're problem-solving. Today, I found out that we thought our mechanical units, we're not going to get here until October, they arrived today, and they're setting those in place, which means we can now close in the building and get the interior started. So we may be a little bit ahead of schedule. That was, I'm not going to say that on the record yet, but, because now it is, that's the kiss of death, but anyway, we are tracking well here, and we're excited for this space for the community and for our students, and so really going well over here behind us. Bookman Road Elementary, it started construction in June. You can see the imagery is what it's going to look like in the new, in the media center and the collaboration space. In the picture is just updating the drive, very short stacking at Bookman Road Elementary School, and so now we're able to extend that stacking, get more cars off the road, improve traffic, and then upfitting with the collaboration space and improving the, and upfitting the media center at Bookman Road. Killian Elementary, Killian's a little different. They're same, actually ex-designed school like we have at Bookman, but they have four portables. So we have an addition here at Killian. Their schedule will be done in January to get all the students back in the building, as well as a collaboration space and a media center outfit, and that project is going well. Pontiac Elementary just started. You can see on the picture on the right is up, we should have the drives done. You can see on the picture on the right is up, we should have the drives done by the start of school, but the major additions, the big picture on your left is basically putting a brand-new building inside the courtyard, which is going to be a, a big media center and all the, all the related art spaces, as well as updating all the Montessori classrooms. The Montessori classrooms are an undersized classroom for Montessori. Montessori has two adults, a lot of manipulatives, and so we're expanding those classrooms at Pontiac, and that should be done in about eighteen months. Blithedwood Middle, I don't have any good images right now. We just started, but this is kind of an idea of what we're doing there. The blue is new additions, the yellow is renovations, as well as all the site work. So, next time I present, I'll have a better picture, but I just wanted to give you an idea of what we're doing there. That's another eighteen-month project. Lastly, Spring Valley hasn't officially started. I put it on the construction list, but it actually starts July nineteenth. You can see the top image is a new fieldhouse, which is on Stern Field. It's in a, it's a separate building to support the athletics on that side of the field, as well as a new wrestling room and cheer room and locker rooms. The image on the bottom is a expansion to Bates Hall, which oversees the football. That's a new weight room addition. And then, the, the architectural drawing on the right is the big multipurpose space at Spring Valley and really transforming that to a blank open space into usable classroom, science rooms, and collaboration space. So, it's super excited for this. This is another eighteen-month project. So, some other things, camera conversion project is almost done. It's just installation and tweaking how to use it. It's, we've maybe done this much of, of what the cameras can do, and so we're just constantly training with those. Access controls are underway, that's badge access, making sure that we get all the doors onto this as opposed to keys, et cetera, that, that connects to the camera system, and so it's all interconnected. All buses have been purchased, and then majority of all these safety and security projects are done. We continue to change those out as we need to. And then this image, of course, was our strategic overview with Sheriff Lot and the team there with, with our safety team. Other capital improvements, I know I talk mostly bond, but just to keep you abreast of what's going on and things we got on our radar, you can see those different projects that are not bond projects, but we're working on the mechanical issues, the painting at all the schools, all the site work with, with the rain and some of these old things. We've had a lot of sinkholes pop up lately, so we're doing a lot of site fixing. Every school wants new furniture, but every school's not getting new furniture, and playgrounds and other things that we have going on. Just others, some notes, just to keep you informed. Inflation, as you all know, costs are high, but we have seen it settle. But that doesn't mean it's going down. And so, while it may, cost may have been two dollars two years ago, it's ten dollars now, and it's still, it's maybe not going up as fast, but it's not going back to two. So, we're working through that with our, with our financial team. Our labor, our deliveries are better, but it's still random, something that you would never think would, would take time, it's taking time. Labor's okay, but certain companies are just slammed, and so we're, we're doing a good job on the market. And then, few delays here and there, but as I said, we're getting surprises. I got a surprise today about the P H C, so we're hopeful that happens. Lastly, just a kind of a timeline and where we are with our financial information, and y'all had last board meeting, y'all had an update from our financial advisor on, on the capital improvement. I think the biggest thing here that I want to, and I put on here no tax increase, we have spent three hundred and sixteen million dollars so far. We, we plan to spend eighty-seven million more, and based on our financial advisor, no tax increase. All this bond money is spent through your, as an owner-occupied home, there's no tax increase for the capital, and so we have not had a tax increase. I think that's tremendous. Kudos to the board and to our financial team for being able to finance this and without increasing taxes. So, your millage rate has stayed about, stayed the same for, for capital improvements. So, with that, that was a lot of information, but I, I'd like, again, I haven't had an update in a while, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Chairman Trapp?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question. We noticed that there are lots of neighborhoods being built in this area. Have we taken into account adding classrooms to some of these schools where we're going to see an increase in our student population? I didn't hear any classroom increases except for maybe in one or two of those schools.
Good question. So, this bond is funding everything from two thousand eighteen, and so we're in the process, Dr. Moore and I just chatted yesterday about capacities and our demography report. We should be getting a demography report back any day now, which kind of projects out what's going on. I had a meeting with him a couple of weeks ago to really start thinking, putting the scout factor into play, for example. And so, once we get a better idea of what that looks like, that's going to help us build out what our next bond will look like. The thing is, we don't have funding for this right now. We'll have to, we'll have to determine our best funding methodology. So, first, we need to figure out, like you said, what are our needs? What do we want to have? And then, how are we going to pay for it? And so, we're in the, we're in the needs assessment right now, and so we, we're monitoring all that. It's a great question, and more to come.
Great. I look forward to hearing that. And then my second question is, we have a beautiful performing arts center, and I know with theaters all over, there's lots of planning that has to take place before the doors are open. I know that there was a position that was approved. What's the vision for the performing arts center? Is that position going to be really putting together a plan of action to begin recruiting some of these performances that are coming throughout the state?
Yes, I'm going to try my best to answer it without stepping on any toes of the arts, of our people who know a lot more about this than I do. But the plan is, is, as you may remember, we've always had the district auditorium at Richland Northeast. And so, we have had a lot of events there, both internal and then external, but it's, it has lived its life, and it's good. We did a remodel, and so now Richland Northeast, like everybody else, has their own auditorium. So, we've kind of got a, a model in place where we're going to really take that and, and expand it to there. But, so we really want to make sure our students, you know, have the opportunity to, to showcase their talents first and foremost, and then, but also provide experience to our students and communities through national, regional acts and things. And so, it's forty-five minutes to get to the Cogurt Center. If, if traffic's okay, we've got a thirteen, fourteen-hundred seat. I mean, it's going to be really nice. I'm excited about it, that our students have the premier place to perform, and then hopefully our community can have a premier place to, to see some great performances. And so, we're going to be advertising the, the position very soon and try to get that person hired and their team hired in the next short bit to finish this plan. And then, I think, as I mentioned before, we don't want to, if March twenty-twenty-four, maybe they may be complete, but we don't want to open March twenty-twenty-four. There's going to be a lot of kinks to, to iron out, and so, we're looking at anticipation of June, having some first events, but we'll, we'll know more coming sooner down the road. And of course, if there's, we'll, I'll have more people who know more about how to run a theater than me when we get there, so. You're welcome.
Is there any other questions for board members? Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you very much.
Board members, please note that the policies presented tonight are scheduled to be voted on at the August eighth board meeting. Item ten point one, let's take a look at the draft agenda for the August eighth meeting. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. So, for our August the eighth meeting, which will begin with a call to order at five-thirty P M. and then released to our executive session. After executive session, we will go into a public session, which begins at six-thirty P M. We'll have an approval of the agenda prior to executive session, and then, once we come back from executive session, we'll move into our inspirational moment, pledge of allegiance. Then, we'll look at the consent agenda. We'll approve the consent agenda, as well as approving the minutes from the previous meeting, and discuss the classified employment release and in-district transfers. Once that is completed, we'll move to public participation, which is our opportunity to hear from our community and listen to their concerns. Following public participation, we will move into voting for, on the executive session items, which will include the employment recommendations and certified releases, as well as any needed items that were discussed during executive session. We will then move to unfinished business. We will review or vote on policy eight point one, which is policy E B C B, Safety Plans and Drills. Policy revision proposal for policy J H., which is Student Absences and Excuses. Policy eight point three, policy is B C, Board Member Conduct. And eight point four, policy proposal, policy G C C A C slash G D C E, Paid Parental Leave. Once we have approved our policy proposals, we'll move to new business, which will include fourth-quarter pupil service report. Then, we'll move to our draft agenda items for the August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three agenda, followed by public participation, if needed, and then twelve, which is executive session continued, if needed, which will include public session will be released, and the board will reconvene in executive session two, followed by public session will be resumed immediately following exec, executive session two. Once we come back from executive session, if needed, then we will vote on any items that are included in the executive session two. Last but not least, we will have board and superintendent comments, followed by adjournment.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the August eighth, twenty-twenty-three agenda, or to a future agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I would love to see us have a discussion around the policy for release time, either our, August, August third or retreat, or either August eighth meeting.
I think, yeah, I agree, that, that should be added to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
If we could have a draft of the policies in our state that use release time, so that we can have something already available, that'd be great.
Yep. Does anyone else have any additions or comments? All right, we'll move on to second public participation. No one has signed up for, no additional speakers, so we'll move on to the next item, which is executive session. We don't have a need for a second executive session. All right, so, last thing we have this evening is board and superintendent comments. We'll start with Mrs. McFadden.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for coming out for this release time. I'm really excited about the future of this program, if we should implement it here. I'd like to say that SOAR started, and my kids are great SOAR advocates, so thank you for everyone in transportation and, and that are working in SOAR for this school year. It's two weeks, it's a really great time, a good break for the high schoolers and middle schoolers, and elementary, too. They just completed it, to, to get in some schooling, so they're not out for the whole summer, you know? So, I, I'm appreciative of that program. I think it might be ending, this is the last year, so hopefully we'll get some other things in place next year for something like this. But I want to say thank you for the extra funds that are being used for our SOAR, SOAR program. I would also like to say congratulations to Dr. Moore and to our new chair, our new vice chair, and our secretary. We have a great team up here. We've all been working together so well, and so I look forward to this new year. Thank you all so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Mrs. Porter.
I too want to thank all our speakers from this evening. It was great to see some familiar faces as well. I also wanted to just make notice to NAACP having a discussion on the sixteenth at four P M. on hearing from our youth. I know that we have some Richland Two students participating in that discussion and some of our fellow board members talking as well, so I look forward to supporting you guys. Also, our back-to-school bash, I misplaced my flyer, so. It's on August fifth, so I look forward to seeing you there. I know our teachers are probably thinking, like, don't speak about it yet, but I look forward to seeing our students at our back-to-school bash on August fifth. If parents out there, if you haven't completed your annual registration, please complete your annual registration. If you are like me, you are getting those notifications multiple times a day. Make sure you have your proof of residence and upload it to your annual registration, and, and if that gives you a headache, go by your school and give them a copy of it. And they are open Monday through Thursday, so complete that, and I think they will be very happy to have that done before school starts. And then, capital improvements, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for that. I see that we are already purpose-driven and future-ready. I look forward to this school year. I'm excited. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Mrs. Washington.
Yes, I love that. Purpose-driven and future-ready. I want to say thank you to all of our military persons who presented this evening and to all of our attendees who presented during the public session to share information about release time. I'm certainly excited to be able to engage in that discussion. I want to thank you to our chair for leading a great first meeting, and I also want to send a special shout-out to all of our coaches and students across Richland Two who are participating in the Fellow Christian Athletes Athletic Summit. So excited about the work that you all are also doing in our schools, and I look forward to seeing everyone at the back-to-school bash. Have a great evening, and God bless you, Richland Two.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Nash.
Well, it's seven thirty-three for one. I know you guys are excited about that, but I want to thank everybody for coming out our inspirational moment. You guys were awesome. Thank you for the all that you do. And release time, I mean, I guess when you guys show up, you show up. Thank you for coming out and sharing that with us. I, like my colleagues, are excited about talking about the possibilities and making that a really great discussion. Also, want to thank everyone in our district that's holding down summer programs, our unsung heroes, the ninjas in the background. We appreciate you. And I would be remiss if I didn't do what Mark Claxton said. We have been trying to get security subs, and he told me that we have security sub increase, but he also told me to keep going. So, if you would like to be a security sub, then please get in touch with Mark Claxton for our new school year coming up. You know, we're trying to implement a lot of safety and security things, and we, having bodies and people to help with safety and security would be wonderful. Okay, next up, okay, the district is collecting appliances and supplies for our international teachers. We want, like, new things, things like that, to welcome them in our community. So, if that's something you're interested in, Maria Owens, she, she would be the person, right? Right? Okay, the studio over here says yes. So, Maria Owens will be the person for that. Reach out to her and see how you can get involved in helping welcome our international teachers who are coming here to fill very important roles. Next up, I'd like to give a shout-out to my church, Grace Life, who is collecting new backpacks and school supplies to provide students in the district who call, qualify for McKinney Vento, and you can be a part of that. You actually can go on our website at gracelife.church, and there's a way that you can be a part, part of that, whether you drop off a backpack or what, but it's for kids in our district, so that's something I'm looking forward to support and hope that you guys will, too. Last but not least, Ms. Porter, her birthday was July fifth, so happy birthday, Ms. Porter. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Dr. Scott.
The great thing about going last is they've said everything, but I'm going to briefly repeat some of it, because I think it's very important. I want to say, great job to Tyler Gaston, so great to have seen him. He's one of our graduates. I remember when he was just a little boy with his dad, Mr. Gaston, who's one of our phenomenal principals here at Rice Creek Elementary. So, thank you to Tyler and all the military guests that he had representing today, and I'm doing this without my glasses. Other thing, Village Church, thank you guys so much for coming out. We appreciate your presence, and we can feel the spirit of the Lord, so thank you. Come back again. Come back again. We, we need that. And also to Mr. Trapp, great job on your first meeting. Dr. Moore, it's a pleasure to have you back with us. And, if you paid attention, the next meeting is August eighth. Do not come on July twenty-fifth, because we would not be here. The next meeting is actually August eighth. And then, two, on a sad note, please pray and send condolences out to one of our former students that we lost tragically, Richland Northeast High School students. So, keep his family in your prayers, and that's all I have, because I want us to get out while the lights still light up. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Dr. Moore.
Well, Dr. Scott, I do have some, several pages of prepared remarks, but I will endeavor to be brief with my several pages of comments. But first and foremost, Mr. Chair, trustees, staff, community, and students, this is the second week that I've had the honor second week that I've had the honor and the privilege, as well as the opportunity to be your superintendent, and I have thoroughly enjoyed the one-on-one meetings with board members, with district leaders, and community conversations that I've had with the leaders like Sheriff Lot, Sheriff Lot. He is such a great guy. If you've never been to his office, before you go in, please be prepared, there's lots of animals on the wall, as well as the church community that I, that I visited and who welcomed me this past Thursday. I want to thank all of you for the warm South Carolina welcome that you've given me. My husband actually said to me, "Is everyone in South Carolina nice?" And I said, "I don't know if they're all nice in South Carolina, but I do know that they're nice in Columbia." So we thank you for that very warm welcome that you've given to us. For those that I've not had the opportunity to meet yet, I hope that you will come to one of our community meetings, our meet and greets that we have set up. They will be July 25th and July 26th from 4:30 to 5:45 PM, and then on July 27th from 8:30 AM to 9:45 AM, right here in R2I2. I will also be meeting with members of the teacher forum, classified staff advisory council, and parent advisory council this week. Now, speaking of new faces in new places, I would like to welcome three new principals to their leadership position in Richland II schools. On July 1st, Dr. Keisha Chandler Smith was promoted to principal at Lake Carolina Elementary School Upper Campus. Dr. Brandon Ross returned to Richland II as our new Mueller Road Middle School principal. And finally, Torrin Robinson was promoted to principal of Bridge Creek Elementary School. If you happen to be by any of those schools, stop by and say hello and congratulate them on taking on the challenge of being a school leader and creating that rich and engaging learning environment for each student that we have the privilege to educate. This morning, speaking of privileges, I had the privilege of visiting some of our middle school students, taking advantage of our summer SOAR program. I learned math, I learned how to long division, I learned how to take two-column Cornell notes. I met several students in the cafeteria who just told me how excited they were being, they were, they were to be there, and I will say, since I've been here, I've been in a lot of meetings. Today was my happy day. I was joyful to be with our students. So it was a great opportunity. If your student has not participated in SOAR, it is not too late. Please get them there. It's going to be definitely worth their while. Elementary SOAR was three weeks of a summer program that operated from June 12th through 29th for rising K-5 students, so what's going on now is for secondary. This year, we had 2,628 students register to participate. That is amazing. Kids in programs in the summer. Parents love it, kids don't, but it's what they need, so we thank you for that. SOAR for middle and high school students is an eight-day program, and that's what I visited today. We had over 700 registered to attend SOAR at the secondary level. The middle school students previewed the first nine-week standards in ELA and mathematics, and this year, we added a great program, AVID, which focuses on assisting our middle school students with their organization and academic strategies. That's a program that one of my children could have used. His backpack was the black hole. Our high school students previewed their English I and algebra, so they are prepared to begin their high school experience with confidence and in these two gateway courses, which is extremely important. I want to leave you with a phrase you will be hearing a lot of in the future. It is our new branding statement that was developed through our strategic planning process. I've already heard it once tonight from a board member, but I'm, I'm going to repeat it, because what research tells us is that we have to hear things seven times before it really begins to stick. So I'm not going to say it seven times tonight, but you're going to hear it seven more times in the future. And that is, this phrase is, "It is purpose-driven, future-ready." So every decision that I make, every initiative that I bring forward, will be purpose-driven, that's number two, and centered around student achievement, making sure our graduates are future-ready for college, career, and service. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I don't have a lot planned to say, because I was just getting through the night, guys. It's just that simple. Having said that, I would like to thank everyone that's here, especially those that participated in our public participation. I think that program is a really good thing to do. Anything we can do to help students be better people, we should take advantage of it. Especially I thank those that participated in inspirational moment. I had asked, this was my month to do that, and I'd ask some folks to take care of that, and they did a really great job. I want to thank them for that. The last thing I don't want to say, because I always, I'm the negative guy in the groups, I want to, I want to go out on a negative note, guys, it's four weeks and school starts back, okay? So for all the children out there, just keep in mind, you've only got four weeks to enjoy the summer, okay? Our next board meeting is four weeks, that's the first day of school, and so we look forward to seeing all of you then. And everybody have a good night, and with that, we're going to adjourn before 7:45. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Yes, Mrs. McFadden. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made to adjourn the meeting by Mrs. McFadden, a second by Dr. Scott. Is there any question or any discussion? Board members, let's vote. Don't come in a second. Oh, you guys are about to say we do it by hand here. The vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.